Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. The purpose of this workshop is for staff to provide information on projected receipts and expenditures for 2018-19 recommendations from the Budget Advisory Committee for reductions to approve. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Snow. Thank you, President Snow. I don't know if the mic's on. Can you hear it? Okay. Thank you, President Snow. We want to today walk through the information that, one, came from the last budget workshop with the Board of Education and some of our thoughts and reflections as we walk through the Board information, as well as from the Budget Advisory Committee. And so what we've shared with you today is, one, a matrix. You should have a hard copy at all of your desk. I think that was also added online and the Board information that gives a big-picture look at what the district recommendations are, what the Budget Advisory Committee's recommendations are, what the Board recommendations or prioritization looks like. That's at your table. And then we also have a PowerPoint that we're going to walk through fairly quickly to -- oops. I think before we start, I'll turn it back to you for roll call.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. My apologies. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Hallman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Mr. Evans.
Thank you again. And one of the things that I forgot, starting off, I just want to thank once again all the Budget Advisory Committee members that met with us. I believe it was five meetings. So they invested a lot of time, not only in the meetings, to develop their prioritization list, but also they invested time away from the table, sending in information to the Budget Committee Chairs. So -- and I also want to thank the Board, because they've obviously been working really hard on this as well and doing a lot of thinking. So I think a lot of folks have done some analysis and thoughts on this, and I think that's a wonderful thing. So what we have now in front of you in slides, and Connie now kind of tag-team on this, we're also going to ask some district staff to join us, who worked on some of the details that might be a little different than what we had in our previous Board Workshop. But really, what we did was take that Budget Advisory Committee information that the Board had from the last workshop, and then try to figure out, are there ways to look at this that are close to what are from the Board and the Budget Advisory Committee, but also meet the expectations of our schools as best as possible with the reductions? Because we know, no matter what we reduce, there's some impact. And so you're trying to figure out any method that has the least impact for this coming year. So with that in mind, the big-picture impact, the next slide will show you what we're going to go over in each of the slides. We're going to break down each of those areas, but we wanted to give you a picture of what it looks like for this approximately $29 million. You can see that by far the largest amount is from central office. We did include the $7 million textbook adoption. That's going to be one of the slides later on. But again, it shows you where your big dollars are in this particular reduction, and just a nice visual. So the next slide is, so what are the reflected items in that big central office cut? And we start here with the 12.6 million. Connie, do you want to share a little bit about some of the additions? I know we're slightly above the Board average, and we're quite a bit above the Budget Advisory Committee's average, at 2.6 million above that.
What we did with the central office reductions is, it was a combination of contracted services and discretionary money, along with reduction in staff. And we actually had a 59 FTE total of the 309 people that are paid for with general fund located here in central office were reduced. So that's 19% of the staff were reduced. And, you know, it does appear as there's a lot of people here at TAC, but, you know, we have a lot of departments that Title I pays for their own staff. So these are the general-funded people that were reduced. And it affected all areas in central office, including accounting, budgeting, administrative support roles, human resources, operations, full and part-time bus drivers. Also, as I said, the discretionary and the contracted services for central office were reduced. And a thing to keep in mind as we're going through this is that this is not a budget hearing where we've got the budget developed. We're in the process of developing the budget. What we're needing from you is some direction on how to develop the budget or what our parameters are as we go forward.
And as the Board knows, we have met with the potential staff implicated with these reductions. So we are -- we're not definitive, because the Board's not voted yet, but we have shared with the staff that potentially are not going to have that position. And also, just a note, our goal would be if there's other positions, for example, if we have a clerical position that's reduced here, we hope that there's placement somewhere in a building where there's a vacancy for that clerical position. Our goal is that there's something else, but just to be upfront, there won't be for everybody. There will be some individuals, there's just no way we'll have placement for all of those 59 FTE. But that's just as a note, that we have met with individuals. So, next slide.
Connie, real quick, just for the Board and the community that is watching, the total number down there is a running total?
Yes.
So as we go through the slides, that number will continue to add up?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, for the cellphone stipends, the Executive Council voted to eliminate their cellphone stipends, as well as keep their salaries flat and not increase them. And we have 197 staff members that do receive a cellphone stipend, and those are ones that are for -- to maintain critical communication in crisis situations in the buildings and at TAC.
Essentially, what it would be is your principals and an assistant principal. You have approximately 90 schools and programs. And the challenge is, all those individuals, and it's assistant principal too, they get calls when a pipe busts. They get calls when the security lines are broken. And our challenge is, if we don't have anything, this is a big reduction. It was 125, so we're recommending, just for those folks, 50. But if they don't have cellphones, and I don't think we can require them, if we don't have a stipend, how do we contact them? And I think the critical piece of being able to call the plumber, being able to call in a crisis where there's a challenge that's happened at a site, and we don't have any district support, I think that's the issue that we saw. So it reduces still down 200,000 from what was, I think the Budget Advisory was 355, which is the total amount. So it's well over half what the total amount is by reducing to 50 and reducing from the cabinet-level positions.
Then we have a reduction for reducing or eliminating travel, and it represents a 50% reduction in central office travel. We left the travel for the buildings and the school programs, and only made the reduction here at central office. So that would be the 200,000, and the running total now is $13 million that we're at for our reduction, that we need to get up to 29 million.
And that matches the BAC, as well as pretty close to the Board average, too, on that one.
We had a recommendation for the elimination of elementary magnet programs, and after further review, we determined that we should just eliminate the discretionary money at this point, because some staff are paid for with the magnet dollars. And study it further and make recommendations to the Board after we've had a chance to review it and see, you know, how we wanted to proceed with that.
Yeah. Some schools might be different than other schools that are receiving the magnet FTE, and we just didn't feel like we had a time, really, to get a clear enough analysis that we could say, "School X loses FTE, but school Y does not." And so our recommendation is not to touch the FTE this year, but study it for this next year and look at which ones we could eliminate without causing undue hardship. But we didn't feel like we had the FTE. So the 275 is strictly discretionary funding, which I've had several principals say that wasn't the challenge for them. It was the FTE that was the challenge.
And the Budget Advisory Committee recommended 1.4 million, because that would have been the elimination of about 17 FTE and discretionary money. And so this is just touching their discretionary money without impacting the buildings.
And this is an item, reduction of elementary assistant principals. I'm going to ask Charles, and I believe it's Scott and Dwayne are going to join us up here to talk about why this is so different than the Budget Advisory Committee's recommendation and the Board average recommendation. This is probably the biggest shift of any of the things we've looked at so far. All the other items have been fairly close. And so I want them to kind of share the thoughts they went through as they analyzed. And really, it was done in conjunction with the SSL positions and the other non-teaching, non-classroom teaching positions. And so, and we're going to hit those slides in just a second as well. But with that, Charles, Dwayne, Scott, would you kind of walk us through your thinking?
When we started looking at the support in buildings with assistant principals, the potential reduction of SSLs and the potential reduction of non-classroom staff, it was disparately impacting certain buildings, especially at the elementary level, and that became a concern for us. So we began to look at how we could provide the best possible support to those buildings while still having some sort of reduction within the Budget Advisory Committee's team. And looking at the supports needed at our highest-need buildings, buildings with high poverty rates, high ELL rates, persistently low-performing schools, talking with the EDs, talking with CIS, we began to look at the assistant principal really provided better support than an SSL could or than a non-classroom teacher could. The assistant principal is able to do quite a bit more than those other two roles were. So we sat down and looked at that staffing formula. We staff everything based on formulas, so looking at that staffing formula and revising that, to move from a formula that just directly staffed based on number of kids, head count, to a formula that took into account poverty rate, took into account ELL rate, and looking at those things, that kind of provides a formula based on equity. Scott and Dr. Sturgeon and Dr. Chisholm, I'll be politically correct, can better address how APs can better support buildings.
So, an assistant principal has the ability to supervise staff and provide evaluation. They can run professional development. They'll also serve in some of those needs that an SSL might. So it just provides a broader support for a building. And if we're all going to have less, how can we realign supports to schools, our high-need schools, our schools that we need to continue the momentum that has been built with some of the placement in terms of things around reach, and still provide consistency for those schools that we need to continue to see growth in and deal with the fact that we are going to have less somewhere? And using a thoughtful process and assignment of those things, looking at things beyond just simply a number in a school of students and making decisions on need.
Do want to make sure that we're clear, the new staffing formula will have some schools getting assistant principals and some schools still losing assistant principals. So that's where we looked really closely at those non-classroom FTE, to ensure that we weren't entirely taking support away from a building and making sure we were balancing that. So every building had some level of support, but trying to really take into consideration buildings that had higher needs than other buildings.
Next slide. Can I ask you a question? Next slide.
Okay. The next reduction is a reduction of secondary assistant principals, as we originally talked about in Budget Advisory Committee. At the secondary level, we are overstaffed with secondary assistant principals. In the last week and a half, or seven, eight business days, we've had two retirements out of our secondary assistant principal roles. So this is not reducing a person, this is reducing a vacant position, reassigning assistant principals to match our staffing formula as we move forward.
I know we had some question about some specific individuals that would have been impacted prior to the retirements. They would not be impacted. So that's why we came back to it after the retirements. It doesn't impact anyone's job.
Part of the Budget Advisory Committee discussion was that, right now, the buildings get $100 per student in discretionary money, where they can use the funds to pay for things like copiers or supplies or whatever they need in their building. And one of the things suggested was to reduce that allocation. So we recommend reducing the secondary allocation by 10%. So instead of $100 per student, they'd get $90 per student. And then for the secondary, reduce it by 5%, or, excuse me, for the elementary, reduce it by 5%, so they would get $95 per student for their discretionary money. And then the central office also has all of their discretionary funds reduced, represented in that 12.6 million that we talked about in the first slide. As you know, we're instituting time clocks coming with this next school fiscal year, and one of the recommendations was to reduce overtime. We do spend about $3 million a year, or that's what we'd spent last year on overtime. And so we feel that that could be achieved by increasing efficiencies and how overtime is tracked and managed. And then overtime management would be moved to the direct supervisor. So a principal in a building would be looking at the overtime of their classified staff and how they're managing it. So we're hoping that we would have some savings there, just because we'll have a better way to track that status. One of the things that was talked about quite a lot was the reduce or eliminate the textbook adoption. And that's the ELA textbook adoption, and I think we were going to have Melissa come up and talk about that. We -- it's really too late in the year right now to get that going and adopted, so we were going to delay that for one year, so we could study the material selection.
We could easily move back the ELA adoption for K-5 one year. So that would then allow us to do our curriculum development cycle, not next year, but the following year. And then we could implement the new materials the following year after that. The interim, what we'll do is, last time I did pass out a one pager for you to take a look at, we have already developed professional development for our teachers. And then we can also take a look at teaching them the new instructional shifts or instructional strategies that they would use with their current materials. And then we can also explore using open education resources as well for additional materials.
Thank you, Melissa. Again, this ties, this recommendation ties back into the assistant principal recommendation. And I don't know, Charles, do you want to come back up, or Scott, and just quickly share that thinking as you work through the school support liaison? We kind of explained it on the assistant principals, that we wanted to keep all of those, which was a variation on the Board and the BAC. In this one, we're pretty close to the Board and BAC, a little bit more of a reduction in the Board, less in the BAC. But it's related to that, the SSL's related to the assistant principal. So, yeah, Lisa or Charles?
Again, when we were looking at the gaps being created by the reduction, we wanted to look at how we could provide the best support for buildings and still maintain those reductions. So it became kind of a balancing game between the support an SSL can give and the support an assistant principal could give. And in talking about and seeing the value of that assistant principal and the better support they can give those higher-need buildings, we further reduced the SSLs from some of the other recommendations to going to 18. And Ms. Ederback has a plan that can cover district needs to address attendance and other SSL concerns across the district with just 18 SSLs, providing support for all buildings. I'll let her talk about that.
Yes, we believe in community schools and family engagement. If we're fortunate to have 18 school support liaisons, to be able to have them focus strictly on the functions that they were originally sent to the building to do. And so, working with our team and getting input from other executive directors, we believe that we can sustain a model of support that will help them really move schools with attendance, due process, the placement, and then community and parent engagement with mediations. And I feel very comfortable and confident that moving the assistant principals into those highest-needs buildings will be able to sustain that system of support, as many of you mentioned at the last workshop.
Our next one was to reassign 50 FTE-certified staff in buildings not assigned to classrooms. So put them back into the classroom. And the Budget Advisory Committee recommended moving all of that staff back into the classrooms. And then the Board average was about $3 million, or, you know, 2/3rds of the staff moving them back into the classrooms. And then administration is actually recommending to not do that at this time.
We believe that this is an item that should be studied and addressed next school year. When we look at non-classroom teaching staff, a significant proportion of them receive a contract variance, additional pay for their duties that they have assumed. And being after April 15th, we don't get the savings by moving them back into the classroom, because we'd still end up paying that contract variance. We believe that we need to be a little bit more thoughtful when we look at supports for building. And as we look at non-classroom teachers, how can we provide appropriate support for teachers and students in a non-classroom role without stripping certain buildings of non-classroom teachers? So wanting to be a little bit more thoughtful and strategic as we looked at that and spend a year studying that and address that next spring.
We did a reduction in the non-transportation contracted services, and we have some funds set aside for, like, if there was a lawsuit or a settlement that we had to pay, or different things that come up during the year that we hadn't anticipated. So we have this kind of set aside. So we actually reduced the non-transportation contracted services to, from accounting and finance, because we have some funds set aside for the unknowns that happen every year. So we went into that part to reduce it. That's one-time money. It's not something you can always go back to, because our budget's nearly $1 billion, and you can't run a business like that and not have some type of reserves for unexpected events. So, but we felt that we could do that this year to help with our reductions that we needed to make to go forward.
I wouldn't say it's one-time money. I wouldn't agree with that, Connie, not to contradict you here, but we don't know. Because we don't know until the end of the budget year whether or not this is an account that, depending on what happens with inter-local transfers, depending on litigation, you might have unencumbered, excuse me, unencumbered cash balances that come from this account. And we'll know at the end of August
Right.
-- whether there's unencumbered cash balances that increase in August when we close out the books. So it may or may not be one-time money. It kind of depends on what happens with the end of the year.
It should be something that we look at and keep aware of. You know, as we see what's going on during the year, if we had a Turk or something that we had to pay back on taxes or things like that, we just need to keep track of that. And that's something we do with our projections every month, as we're looking at what's coming up, what do we know is out there. And so we're constantly tracking those numbers, so.
Is that 800,000 part of the general fund reserve, or the general reserve?
No, it was budgeted in the accounting and finance area, and that was just to cover just unexpected things that come up.
So a separate reserve, and you still have enough reserve?
Yes, we have enough.
Maybe we could help you cover what you need.
Yes.
What we did was look at the last five years and the usage out of that account, and it certainly, 800,000 looked like you'd still be okay and have some transfer over to the unencumbered cash balance in August.
But you do have to watch your projections and what's happening every month, because you don't want to run out of money and then have to borrow to make it to the end of the year. There was a lot of talk about centralizing summer school. That is going to be one of our study items that we have. We have a budget, I think it's about $6 million, Melissa, for summer school. So this would be a $500,000 decrease in the $6 million. And it would, it's a district-wide summer school program, both high school and elementary, and, you know, perhaps centralizing some locations or finding some transportation efficiencies. We feel like out of $6 million, there could possibly be a way to get 500,000 in savings. And that's not for this year's summer school, it's next year's summer school. So we have some time to look at it and make thoughtful consideration of what we're going to do to find that savings. Freeze pay was something that the Budget Advisory Committee talked about. It didn't make it above the line, but it's something that, you know, we're working with our bargaining units to get them to agree with that, and we feel pretty good about that. I don't know, Mark, if you have any thoughts about it?
Well, the Board has already approved the freezing of pay for all cabinet-level positions in the district. And it, we're still in the negotiation process, but I think most of our employees also see the need to be conservative. So I do think there's some recognition as we look at positions that we're going to be impacting.
We have reducing, right now, we have 100 vacant para positions. And out of the 1,356 positions that we have in the district, so that would be reducing it by 100 vacant positions, actually eliminating those, and then reallocating the paras to the high-need areas that need to be covered. So we would recommend reallocating those paras to the high-need vacancies and to actually eliminate 100 of our positions.
So just as a note, that would be less than 10%. You've got about 1,356, I believe, para positions. So the 100 vacant represents approximately 7% of your para-population. So we think we can do it just through the attrition. It looks like we can, but we will need to move. Some will move from Building A to Building B if there's a specific need. For example, a special ed para that's required because of the special IEP needs of a student, you're going to make sure that para goes there. So there could be some movement, and we'll start working on that the minute the Board votes on what we do. That will be a top priority for HR.
During the Budget Advisory Committee, they also had some areas that they recommended there be further study. And as we've talked through this, we are going to be studying the non-classroom certificated staff in buildings, and we're going to look at a lot of different areas. One of the things we're going to look at is the elimination of the extended-day-year programs. We're going to look at transportation efficiencies. Cellphone stipends, we'll reevaluate the critical positions that need to be able to respond in crisis situations. Outsourcing the Secondary Success Program, that's something we'd have to work with OEA on. And shutting down central office for one week. Magnet programs, looking at the path forward for our pension plan. And then also, summer school, we'll study that as we go to the 2019 summer school system. We'll look at, you know, how we're going to be managing that going forward.
And maybe in a related piece, we have asked the Council of Great City Schools to do an audit on our special education program, to see if they see any cost savings in that area as well. So it's a separate type of study, it's not an internal study, it's an external group that's going to give us some advice on special education. Yeah, thank you, Vice President America. It's not a fee-based, when you use Council of Great City Schools, since we're partners and members-- When you use Council of Great City Schools, since we're partners and members, we don't pay for their team to come in and evaluate our programs. We've used them before for transportation, facilities. So, we have used their services, which is kind of nice because you get external expertise at a very minimal, minimal or no cost.
So, our next steps after our meeting tonight is hopefully on June 4th, we are able to have some, board makes some recommended cuts and take action on that at our board meeting on Monday. We would do the staff adjustments and realignment between June and August. We're going to be working on the budget as we have been all along. We just needed direction and guidance from you. And then, plan to have a budget workshop in August. We get our assessed property values on August 20th. And then, hope to have the budget hearing on August 29th. And publish the budget on August 29th, have the hearing on September 5th, and then actually file the budget by September 20th. So, we're just getting started, but this is an important step as we go forward.
Thank you. So, if you could start from the beginning, the 12.6 for everybody on the board. This is a time where we'll scroll through these slides. And if you have a question or a comment or anything like that, it'll be the time, the first slide, the one after this, please, sorry. Let us know, and then we can bring that staff up to answer any of your questions or listen to the comments that you may have. If you have any questions, as we scroll through, just let us know. Yes, sir.
Mr. Snow, I didn't realize the process. I have some questions. I think we passed up the slide. I thought that we would just go back and forth, but I do have some questions.
What slide? Just read the slide in the corner.
Slide number five.
Go back to slide number five, please.
I guess before I ask my question, though, about cellphone stipends, which I think I've been pretty vocal about, I guess I'd like to hear from the board on whether or not we want to get in the weeds of budget-making decisions or if this is just something that we want to go ahead and give the authority to the district to make these tough decisions and bring us a budget back in August and we'll approve it. I think that's been a discussion that's kind of underlying this whole process. And I'm not sure that everyone's really still on the same page there.
I would first like to say that the recommendations that are in front of the entire board are recommendations from the district. The Budget Advisory Committee was created by the district. And today, we are, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Evans, that if you have any questions or you want more clarity for, this is the time to bring those up as this will be the recommendation that the district will bring forth on Monday.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. We're trying to take the information that we've received from the Budget Advisory Group and the board piece, the board prioritization work, but also trying to utilize your hired administrators that the district has hired to look at the weeds of the process because that's what they do. That's what they were hired to do in all those respective areas. And so, their input was taken into account on how they're trying to figure out the least amount of impact to students, even though recognizing, no matter what you do, creates some impact. So, that's where the recommendations come from.
And another thing to point out is all of the administrative recommendations that we have total up to be $29,535, which would meet our deficit that we have going forward to the next year.
And again, we also believe there's going to be a need to come back next year with another conversation, but we don't know the dollar amounts yet until we close out the books in August, until we receive our property assessment. And so, we've got a couple of key things still in front of us for additional cuts for what would be the 2019-20 year, 2019-20, yeah, 2019-20 year.
And we do have those study items where we're going to go back and be more thoughtful in reductions that we would make to a building or reassigning staff and all of that. So, knowing that we are going to have more reductions coming next year, we can be more thoughtful and make sure that all the buildings are receiving the supports that they need.
Mrs. Gotti.
Well, first of all, I want to thank staff for coming back with a recommendation because I think that's the responsibility that you all have to us. I know I said last time I didn't want to do ranking or numbers because that's in the weeds, not my job, and I don't understand how the impacts are. I very much appreciated the fact that this evening, which really, I think, maybe for the first time for me, was a clear understanding of where staff was going and that things had been thought through on how impacts to buildings would be instead of almost, you know, throwing a dart at a target and hoping we hit something. So, I felt like tonight I heard some clear understanding of here's what we're going to do to work through. I still obviously have huge concerns about elementary curriculum, but staff is saying we can coach teachers to get them where we need to be even though we're behind. So, I feel like you all have done what you needed to do. Your recommendations are really the expertise that we should be looking to because you all know the detail of each of these areas and where you felt like it was most palatable. I think when we get to September, I'm certainly hopeful that we don't have to cut into the reserve where we get it down to $60 million because if that happens, we're going to end up having an item on almost every agenda saying we're going to void policy or we're going to overlook policy because we're going to have to dip into the reserve again this month and it'll drop below the 10% and the risks that we have. So, for me, I'm certainly fine with what the district is recommending. I don't want to get into the detail of it personally, myself. What I'm going to watch for as we get close to September is where we're at on reserve and whether or not we, as a board, can approve a budget that goes too far into the reserve if that's the case. And hopefully, it won't be. Hopefully, we won't have used all of our money. Many times, we discover that we've got leftover. And in this particular budget, 10 to 20 million is not a little number, but it's not a huge number for the budget we're dealing with. So, I think, I think from my standpoint, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Well, just to finish up on where I was going with this is, you know, part of the difficulty is some of these things, it's a combination of, you know, getting into the weeds, getting into the details of particular budgets, but it also crosses over into the policy, which is our domain. And so, that's what, you know, whether or not we want to cut paras and use that money to pay cellphone stipends, I mean, that's kind of encompasses both those areas. I mean, if you draw a Venn diagram, it kind of encompasses both when we're talking about trying to stay away from cuts to the classroom. Me personally, I think everyone in this room has a cellphone. And whether or not it's necessary for a job is, to me, pretty irrelevant. I think the question is, are we best utilizing every dollar that the taxpayers gives us? And when we're leaving $150,000 for cellphone stipends for folks who I would presume already have a telephone, and then at the same time, we're making cuts from classrooms, I think that is a policy decision that is one that we either support or don't support, so.
Ms. America.
So, I do want to say something on that because I understand, yeah, we all have cellphones. But my job doesn't pay me anything for my cellphone. They don't expect me to answer my phone 24 hours a day. They don't expect me to be checking my email on my phone 24 hours a day. And that's what we're asking of our critical staff is if there's a hailstorm and you've got a hole in your roof of your school building and you're the principal and you get a phone call, or you're the chief engineer and you get a phone call, you're going to, we expect them to answer that phone call and get to that building. If you're a principal and you're on vacation and something happens in your building, you're still going to get a phone call. And we still expect you to take that phone call and respond however you can. And I think that's the difference is we're not saying you have to have a cellphone. We're saying you have to have a phone and you have to answer it, you have to respond. And that's something that I do think we need to do further review on. Okay, does everyone who currently has a cellphone stipend or receives a phone from the district, are they mission critical? I think that's something that the administrative team has talked about. Okay, let's go through, let's look at this as we evaluate things because we're going to be in a similar situation next year, most likely, of having determined things to cut. And so, that's always something we can come back to of, you know, is 50 what we should be doing? Should it be 25? Are there people that we can eliminate, which is going to be another reduction? But I think for at least right now, considering, just thinking about weather events based on last summer, thinking about events that are happening in schools, we need that line of communication to be there 24 hours a day.
I get that, but again, I'm on call at my job. A lot of people are. I know teachers spend hundreds of dollars every year out of their own pockets to buy things for students who can't afford it. They answer the phone 24 hours a day if need be, the teachers I know in this district. And so, I just, it's just not something that I can support. But again, that's where we get in the difference between policy and getting into the nitty-gritty of the details, so.
Connie?
Page him.
Can we go back to the slide? I just, I wanted to, I don't know, not really thank the administrative team on this one, but just I really appreciate that you looked at the difference between secondary and elementary because a lot of the cuts, the SSL affects elementary more, the assistant principal changes would affect elementary more, even the reallocations. A lot of the stuff we were talking about affects elementary more than secondary. And this is one of the changes that would affect secondary a little bit more, even though they do have a larger student population in their buildings. But I just wanted to point that out, that I saw that and appreciated that.
I have a question on that. This slide is, would this be, what percent, I can't imagine we'd be eliminating all overtime. What percentage does this $1 million represent?
It'd be a third. We had $3 million that we spent last year in overtime. So, we still have, you know, like, snow removal and emergency things to pay overtime for, but really make a concerted effort to manage it and make sure that we limit it as much as we can.
And what processes are in place? How does it work? How's it approved and so forth? If there is a process?
There is a process. The supervisor is supposed to approve the overtime, but the buildings currently don't have a budget for overtime. So, it just keeps building up, you know, as it would in operations or wherever that, so it's one that we're going to really emphasize and make sure that people are aware where they're at, how much is left, you know, that we're not exceeding, you know, the $2 million mark for the overtime.
Mrs. Gotti.
One of the things that we talked about in a previous, I think, Budget Committee meeting was that what oftentimes happens is we have a lot of use of our facilities on the weekends by community partners. And depending on how staffing gets handled, we end up with all this overtime on the weekend that we don't recover from the fee that gets charged. So, part of it is going to need to be analysis of staffing and really managing that well.
And also, when people rent the facilities, making sure that the fee they pay covers the overtime of the staff that have to be there.
I have a question on that. So, the cycle, as I understand it, is typically a six- or seven-year cycle. So, would this, would this mean that we have to wait another five, six years or we can jump onboard, whenever? And I also want to confirm, I know we exchanged some emails, the anticipated cost is the best that we can predict, plus or minus a few hundred thousand would be in the range of 4.8 to 5.3 million. Does that sound about right?
So, the best estimate that we found with surrounding districts or even districts that are like us across the US was probably Millard. They're currently doing adoption now for 10,000 students. And I don't, I think it's 1.7 million. And when you multiply that by the number of students we have in elementary, it would be about 5.1. And so, that was our best estimate. And then, as far as your first question goes, the state does a standards revision process every seven years. And then, after they do it in year one, they create that process. We have one year to do our standards revision process. And then, the second year, we go into a curriculum development cycle to update materials. But we do not have to wait until the next period. We shouldn't wait until the next period. So, we could just delay that purchase or that process another year.
But then, would that necessarily mean that the life cycle for that gets shrunk by every year that we don't adopt it because then we bump up against that next cycle?
So, not necessarily. It's, to shift things around like that is pretty typical when you do curriculum development cycles because it's so costly. And so, I actually have a copy of ours that we updated for the five subject core subject areas, if you'd like to see it. And you will see that things have shifted in the past because of budget, what's available, what's not. Also, sometimes the state does some things differently, so that will cause it to shift.
Okay.
And so, it's not, it's not abnormal for things to shift, but you need to have a guide to stay on target. You don't want to let something go by for too many years.
Right. And so, if we want to go ahead and delay this one year and do it next year, we're going to have to, two years. I think I'm just stating the obvious. We would just have to find the money from somewhere else. So, it's kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Right.
Okay.
Hopefully, two years from now, we'll have some type of resolution with the legislature with our shortfalls.
Correct.
Correct. You're good. Dr. Holman?
Is Lisa here? Yes, she is.
Lisa?
Sorry to keep parking on this. But I do have a question. So, looking at the recommendation of only having 18 SSLs as opposed to the total that we currently have, and knowing how busy the SSLs are with the number that we have in place, and I realize that some of our SSLs currently work in multiple buildings and some of them are stationed at individual schools. What would that look like with only having 18 SSLs and the amount of work that they have to do where some of them deal with, some of them actually serve as assistant principals, literally? On top of their doing behavior, doing the, keeping track of absences, doing home visits, how would that look with only having 18 SSLs throughout the entire district?
Well, interesting enough, prior to not having SSLs
Well, interesting enough, prior to not having SSLs, there were about 17 student personnel assistants that completed those roles and served the district and served the district very well. And so we believe in looking at what the role and responsibilities are for school support liaisons. They would not necessarily be housed in a school full-time. They would have a caseload of two to three schools as well as there would be building designees as assistant principals currently are. And they would work with the school leadership teams around attendance, due process. They would work with schools if there's parent and concerns with regards to mediations. And so we believe, we're very optimistic that with 18, that would allow us to be able to build the capacity of those individuals to serve in those four domains around the placement of students, due process, attendance. And really, to me, attendance isn't just about one person that has a responsibility. It's everybody in the school community that has a relationship with that kid. So we are working with other district leaders in developing a system of support around professional development. So a lot of that work will happen in the building.
Okay.
And so to answer your question, we looked, we looked at all of, all of the schools and we ranked them in our office and said, who has the highest attendance needs? Who has the highest amount of suspensions, referrals, expulsions? And we matched the higher need schools up with some not so high need schools and so that individual, that full-time SSL could spend more time supporting the schools that they need.
Okay, so that kinda led to my, my second question. So just to clarify then, so each of the 18 SSLs, they won't, will they typically have the same amount of building bins or would this depend on the need of?
Correct. It would, it would depend on the need of the school. And then, you know, with, with the approach that we have, if I'm a school support liaison that has South High School, I may only have Gilder Elementary School because we know when we look at the attendance, chronic absenteeism for South High, you're gonna need somebody there to have a strategic focus around supporting that team to help eradicate the chronic absenteeism.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, you might have already said this and I apologize. So the 21 SSLs, where will they, will they go back into classrooms? Where will those be eliminate, eliminations? Will they be placed somewhere else? I might have already said this.
Actually, that's not our decision, Mr. Wakefield. As Mr. Evans stated earlier, once the board makes a decision, they will work with those individuals and place them in suitable positions across the district.
Okay, but they will obviously be placed.
Let me add to that answer too, because some will have opportunities to be maybe an assistant principal because assistant principals or SSLs may become principals. We filled or will be, we had a community interview tonight for Highland. They had two finalists, so we'll know quickly who was selected there. We had field club principalship. The two finalists were just last night, so the candidates, the two finalists in both of those were assistant principals, either assistant principals or SSLs. So some will move up and there'll be a ripple effect as a result of that. And I believe we, let's see, we have, we just filled Ponca.
Okay.
And so I believe Abby was, was she an SSL or assistant principal?
Yes.
She was an SSL. So some of these positions have already moved to others and some will move as a result of that. So some will move like that, but there probably will be some, in answer to your question, that might be in a classroom.
But all of them, to clarify, will be placed?
Right, yep. None, they're all certified staff and all will have a position.
Okay. And can I ask a follow-up question with that? So for the ones of the 21 that may possibly move into a different position, and I don't know if Mr. Wakefield needs to answer this question or not, how would they be determined of who those, of the pool of 21, who will actually move up to a different position as opposed to going to the classroom?
So if I understand the question right, how do we choose which 21 are reassigned? And we are following the RIF policy, Reduction Force Policy, which has us looking at seniority.
So they, okay, thank you.
And Ms. Cassidy, we, we have places held for all the SSLs that will be reassigned. It will be a mixture of non-classroom or teaching positions. We've worked with their endorsement, their licensure, their experience. We've also sought input from them as to what they would like to do and tried to match those three items up to find the best possible home for them.
It also include not necessarily a classroom. It could be in a non-classroom, an instructional facilitator because as you know, the recommendation included not reducing any of those, like those 50 FD we talked about. There are some vacancies there too that they would be eligible for. And we actually, and this isn't necessarily a good thing, but we've lost a few staff members because they didn't feel certain about where we're at. And so they've taken jobs in other districts, which we were fearful of. And we, but I understood and several of them talked to me about it and said, I really don't want to, but since this process isn't over and I've been offered this job and it, that's the, that's the tough thing about these kinda conversations is we are holding people in limbo and we've lost at least three to other districts in either SSL roles or assistant principal. Yep.
Thank you. Charles, you might wanna just stay there.
So I, I have a question on this one, which I think gets into, I'm trying to find the line on here. It's actually more related to the note we had on future study items, just because it's something that Mrs. Gadding brought up and I talked to some friends from other school districts as well. But it would potentially involve a change in board policy. So I just was wondering if specifically as part of that looking at summer school, if we could get a breakdown of, you know, over the last five years, what has been the percentage of students taking remedial versus non-remedial summer school classes? And specifically of that non-remedial percentage, what percentage of those students are students that qualify for free and reduced lunch versus non-free and reduced lunch? Because I know other districts have asked, or other people have said, well, why don't you charge for non-remedial summer school classes? But if it's our free and reduced lunch student population taking the majority of the classes, that may not be a smart move for us. So I think it'd be helpful for, look, thinking about next year, for us to have that kinda information and also to find out what, what our neighboring districts and what other urban districts do along those lines too. So majority of our students are on free and reduced lunch, but obviously majority of our students in our district are on free and reduced lunch. I do not have exact numbers for you, but we did do some research with some surrounding school districts and I will go ahead and pass that around. You will see that none of the school districts require the students on free and reduced lunch to pay, but that's also part of a reimbursement as well. The only two districts, I should say three districts, that do require their non-free and reduced students to pay are Millard, Westside, and then Lincoln does at their high school level. So most of our districts do not require students to pay whether they are on free and reduced lunch or not free and reduced lunch. And then you can see and kind of make some decisions as to maybe why those two districts and then the one district at the high school level do require payment.
Mrs. Gadding? Explain. So the cost in district is?
So for example, the cost in district, she's looking at the third column to the right towards the end. Millard, it's $155 per student for the elementary portion and then also the middle school portion. And then they waive the tuition for students on free and reduced lunch.
And where it says none on the high school?
None. So they have, that would be their English language learner students. They do not, and that potentially very well could be because they received federal funds to help pay for that.
I have a question. What, how much is spent on summer school every year? I'm just trying to get a feel for what?
So for this summer, 2018, let's see, 2017, I think it was 1.7. I think that's what is allocated this year for secondary. And then for elementary this year, it is $3,901,768. So it's slightly under $6 million a year for all of our students.
And where is the anticipated savings of $500,000 coming from?
So that would be a reduction of the dollars allocated towards summer school. So we would take a look at, right now, majority of our dollars pays for staff and pays for transportation. And so we are hoping to pick up some, quite a few efficiencies with transportation. So for example, for elementary summer school this year, the $3.9 million is allocated. We only pay approximately $328,375 for material supplies, field trips and things like that across all 46 sites for the summer. And then of course, if buildings have money left over in their regular budget or Title I budget or what we call a sureword emergency fund, they could utilize some of those dollars to supplement if they wanted to. But that's not general fund.
Is there a typical class size for summer school or do they vary so much? Asking for averages?
So state statute requires a 15 to 1 student ratio, if I remember correctly.
I have a question. Do you look at population per school? I know I've, I've heard some of the elementary sites say they have 100 to 150 kids in summer school and then others that have 3, 350, 4, I mean, just large. Would you look at that?
So we have a criteria. And so for example, in our elementary sites, there's criteria. It's mainly, it's pretty much remedial. We offer enrichment through the summer school opportunity as well, but in order to meet that criteria, it is remedial.
Okay.
So we would like to actually pick more students up in some of those sites. And so that's something that we're constantly trying to recruit more students to attend. And so you do see a variation in the numbers of students attending. And some of that is based off of student enrollment. Some schools are just larger than others.
Yeah. Is summer school three or four weeks?
Four weeks.
Four weeks. And then is there a state statute in regards to the amount of time that should be allocated for summer school?
Yes. So the state statute and what I'm referring to is the summer school allowance and the state reimburses us and they call them summer school student units. And there's different areas that we get reimbursed on. So for example, a school district who has summer school for at least 12 days, you would receive a, a summer school student unit. If you have summer school, for example, elementary, one of the reasons we have summer school for six hours is because we receive another summer school student unit for reimbursement. For your students that are on free reduced lunch, that's another student unit reimbursement. And then they also added, they have early childhood. If you have a student that attends summer school in early childhood and then they enroll in kindergarten the next year, then that would also provide a unit. And then the same student in early childhood that enrolls in kindergarten would also have the free reduced lunch unit and attending school for the number of days.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a slide behind. If we can go back to the, the pay freeze. So is, does that figure, 2 million represent, I mean, I think I know the answer to this, I just wanna confirm, does 2 million represent what would be saved if the remaining bargaining units and other employees not subject to bargaining units were to have their pay frozen? Or is it plus or minus a few hundred thousand?
Typically, what, what we do is Megan asks me how much I can afford and I tell her that and then she'll try to negotiate something with each unit, you know, like just through negotiations back and forth. So that's what we had allocated for that amount. And, you know, some bargaining units come in higher, some come in lower, you know, it just depends, but that's what we had set aside for that increase.
Do we know how much more or, or less it could be? Or is that, is that just what you think is, what is most appropriate given all the other puzzle pieces?
Yeah, that's what I believe is most appropriate, given all our puzzle pieces. You know, you also look at, you know, what you pay for insurance and what, you know, the deductibles are and all those kinda things. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that go into negotiations, but this is just one parameter that we use.
Okay, thanks.
Areas of further study are up there for the public and members of the board. If you guys would like additional items to be put on that list, please email them to Mr. Ray. And over the next year, district staff will be gathering information and we'll be coming back to the board on their findings of these studies.
Real quick, thank you, staff, Mr. Evans and everyone that.
I just have another comment slash question.
Yes.
That's okay. I'd like to just pose a question, if anyone, it's open to anyone, if there's been any discussion on the revenue side of things. We are using, I believe, $26 million in savings and just cash on top of what will likely be 26 to 29 million dollars in cuts. And that is unsustainable. I would suggest strongly looking at a levy override in the neighborhood of 6 to 9 cents, which will bring in 12 to 18 million dollars a year. That wouldn't even come close to solving what we are going to be facing annually over the next five years. Without that, I fear absolutely draconian cuts that will make this look like a picnic. And there's an election that we are already paying for in November. There's very little downside. The city has tremendous support for public schools and the school district. And I, I don't think that we have time to wait 30 months before putting that in front of voters. And so I would urge us to not cut our way through this process because it will leave us with a district that, that we don't recognize. And so I, I just wanna put that out there. We don't have, we don't have four, five, six months to make that decision. I think November will be here before we know it. And so I would just ask that that be strongly considered because the downside is, is nil. There's no downside to asking for what we need.
Ms. America?
And I'm, I am just going to throw this out there. If we talk about revenue, we have to acknowledge something that Senator Kowalski said in his recent editorial in the World Herald, and that's that Nebraska ranks 49th in state funding for K-12 education. We are a state that is incredibly proud of its public schools. We produce students who go on to achieve amazing things and are successful when they leave our classrooms. And yet, our state's support is 49th out of 50 states. And so when we talk about revenue, that is something we also have to talk about, is the fact that as a state, we're not supporting our public schools. And it's putting, it's part of why we're in this situation. It's part of why other school districts have had to go through similar, similar things. And we're going to see more school districts continue to go through similar things.
I think you're absolutely right. I, the last thing I ever want to do is to ask people to dig deeper in their pockets, especially in property taxes. It is completely unfair. I think you're absolutely right. The last thing I ever want to do is to ask people to dig deeper in their pockets, especially in property taxes. It is completely unfair, it is unique to Nebraska, and, but it's also, I think, part of what folks in Lincoln would see as a comprehensive package to adequately fund the schools. But you're absolutely right, but I think doing our part, and we have done our part, both in the classroom and as a district overall. And that was shown a couple of weeks ago with the support that we saw, but it needs to be the entire state, and it's very complex, because you are talking about inequities in property taxes between rural and city, and that's much bigger than schools, but when, we all understand that schools take 50% of property taxes, you know, the things are inextricably, you know, intertwined. But we are at a point where decisions need to be made, or else, long-term significant damage is gonna be done. And so, I hope we can do our part, we have done our part, we're doing it tonight, and we just ask for some support from the people who make those decisions.
If you guys have any items you would like to be reviewed or studied for the process, that's something you can email to Mr. Ray. Moving forward, our objective, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Evans, is what you would like for this board to do on Monday, is to vote these recommendations that you brought forth today as one item, correct?
That's correct, President Snow, and then we'd immediately begin working with HR to meet with all the impacted employees, whether it's an SSL or the movement of reallocating those vacant pair of positions. So, that's what we're hoping for. I know we've got folks still waiting for us to take action, and we're really kind of held at bay until the decision's made by the board.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you guys so much. It is, there is no closed session today, so let the record reflect that the board adjourned at 7:14.